In one moment, we will begin our meeting of the board for tonight. And as always, you'll notice that we stand with an opportunity to honor our military men and women by having a time of silence, acknowledging that these individuals put their lives in harm's way to protect our freedoms. So we are so indebted to them and so grateful that we always seek to show that appreciation and gratitude by a moment of silence. So you're of course encouraged and invited to join with me in the voice we do that. And then we'll ask if you would also remain standing so that we can recite the words to you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and
Well, thank you. We want to also acknowledge that we have our individuals. Share tonight, I'm looking. That's anybody in there? I'm asking. We're going to go ahead and move beyond the city of, we could council remarks to our public comment. Just want to remind everybody that in-person comments that we allow members of the audience wishing to address the board directors. And we will let you have three minutes to provide comments, remarks, and negative nature singering out specific employees other than the board secretary will be heard in executive session following the business meeting. The board deserves the right to terminate comments containing personal attacks on individuals. Virtual comments, if you'd like to provide virtual comments, there's a process for doing that. As long as they have their emails to us by 5:30 and we can receive two of those, so those will be read. And then we will acknowledge that after a period of 16 minutes, we believe that we will have completed our opportunity for comments and will move to our way to the board as well. So at this point, I want to read comments submitted for the board. Yes.
When did we, what policy did we do to set the 60-minute maximum? How did we come to that conclusion? Because I don't remember ever having a board discussion on that.
Yeah, if you'd like to have a board discussion on, oh, you can do so right now. You know the process, so feel free to do that. And so as a board, we have the right to set the parameters. So I sent those, I'm sure you didn't review, so if you want to make a motion, you're welcome to do whatever, we can discuss it however you want.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion, we suspend the 60-minute rule.
Alright, so Director Wegeman has asked to make a motion to suspend the 60-minute frame given for public comment. Is there a second? So now, seeing that we all moved on. Alright, so back to public comment. The first one is written by John R. B. And it states, censure or censor. The board proposes to censure Director Paul Wegeman for doing this job. It's a job that the current board has failed to do themselves, represent the people who elected them. Can I hear you back here? Speak up please. It is a job that the current board has failed to do themselves, represent the people who elected them. Indeed, they are also censoring the public, which disagrees with that. Equity, diversity, and inclusion are terms, concepts, with implementation directly related to critical race theory. Essentially institutionalized racism. That is why so many in the district are dead set against it, if they are locked out of your decision-making. You would have known that if you had actually been leaders who listened. The latest election in Virginia and elsewhere revealed the truth behind the hollow details perpetuated in many public education to include current board members, the parental way, while eventually reached Washington. Director Wegeman has been very transparent on this position by publicly voting against district equity policy. His responsibility is to state the board's greed upon policy, which he has done on numerous occasions. However, he is entirely within his rights to explain why he voted against the policy. It's a question that has been asked and need to be answered. The claim that the board members cannot communicate with anyone opposed to policies to cut off sizable number of constituents from representation. Those constituents voted in the last election, you would know that in your political peril. What exactly were the derogatory charges agreed with or cast to the indoors? Who specifically in district staff has mentioned conjunction with the electoral report terms? Nothing but generalities and censure in those specifics. So much for transparency, or is that information censored too? But Director Wegeman afforded the opportunity of a public hearing as per RCW 43-30-110 paragraph act on this matter. If not, this board is in their rush to censure, has denied Director Wegeman due process. Director Wegeman did not give up his First Amendment right to freedom of speech, 21th amendment to the board. Stating that in favor of district's equity policy to get the answers, you might as well wrestling opposing voices rather than debating them has been the unfortunate hallmark of this board, that in itself is worthy of censure. Parents must be represented in all that the district does, as they are real stakeholders, not district employees. You as a board have failed to do that. A second comment that we received through email comes from a Sean Marie Peterson. The topic I would like to comment on is equity. Here's my public comment. Hello, as the parent of a high school student in the Culver Park School District, I am very concerned about a group of parents who have been challenging our equity curriculum. I feel that these parents are attempting to keep racism alive within our schools and are bitter because they are against all children having equal opportunities regardless of their race. It is very obvious by their posts and comments and the Facebook group created primarily for putting down CPSD that they are supremists who are attempting to infiltrate the board with members who also see things through their harmful agenda. And our kids will suffer tremendously if this happens. We should all have the same treatment and opportunities in our school systems. And pushing an agenda like theirs will surely create more problems for our kids, who all deserve to be successful in the future. Thank you for allowing my comment. Those were the statements sent to the board to be read. As a reminder, we've been practicing this judge quite some times, we've had the hybrid model. And so we get letters to the board, but not all requested to be read. I want to make sure that you understand, every letter that has been requested to be read has been, and so we have been very thankful to that. For our public hearing, we have Tanisha Lyons, if you'd like to come. Use your three minutes to speak to the board.
Hello, greetings again. My name is Tanisha Lyons and I am standing before you to say thank you for finally putting through a process to censure Paul Wegeman. Paul Wegeman's comments have been extremely difficult as a black woman raising black children in the district. And hearing that a school board member who was chosen to represent me and my family feels that discipline policies are disproportionate, discipline practices are a result of black and brown students' morals, values, and characters, as he stated in the school board meeting on June. The vile violence that comes across the desk that the community, there are some community members who don't have to live with it and don't have to deal with it and don't have to explain the repercussions and, you know, deal with their children's emotions when they hear people who are supposed to love and support them say cruel things about them. Thank you. It is finally time. Thank you.
Our second request for comment is by Alexis Resendez. Send this, and I apologize if I have not said your last name correctly, would you please?
Sure, it's Resendez. I'm just going to be reading from my phone, so that's fine. My name is Lexi Resendez, I have two children in your school district. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, I realize everyone's time is valuable. I have several topics to cover and will try to make this as quick as possible. It's been said by your school board and the district that kids are now allowed to take masks off outside, as long as they can maintain a six-foot distance. However, that simply isn't the truth at my children's school. Kids are told they are not allowed to take them off at all, all day long unless they're eating. And they are reprimanded if they take them off, even when outside. Also, why are we still doing a six feet of distance when the CDC itself recommends three feet? The kids were just recently granted permission at my children's school to play on the playground equipment. Yet most of them go days or weeks now, in between them they're allowed to play. Why is this? What is the plan to increase their playtime and give them some normalcy and joy back in school? If you've looked around just about any school, kids are missing out on joy. Everything is run by mandates, masks, and distancing. Social and fun aspects have been completely taken out of education, and that's sad. Our kids deserve more. Why is it that other school districts in Tacoma, Lacey, Renton, and Kent have had their playground equipment open since last year? And it's readily available to use? Are we following a different guideline? Will you be requiring the COVID vaccine for five to 11-year-olds? If so, when? If this happens, I will most definitely be pulling my children out of school. Is your district planning on implementing critical race theory into the curriculum? Or have they already? And if so, will parents be notified about this implementation? Thank you for your time. I expect if you can't answer my questions now that you will contact me through the contact information you have.
Thank you very much. Our next individual who would like to speak us from the organization, Vibrant Schools. It's Team Irene again, if you'd like to come.
Good evening, Board Director Superintendent, and again has the Director of Vibrant Schools. I feel compelled to be here this evening for two reasons. One, to say thank you for your courage to present and implement and pass the equity policy. Vibrant Schools is about eliminating the educational equities for students of color and those impacted by poverty in both the Culver Park School District and the Tacoma Public Schools. We have been very diligent in watching your work here as well as in Tacoma Public Schools. And we commend both of your districts for making sure that equity policies have been reviewed and passed, and we're looking forward to the implementation and holding both of your boards accountable for the implementation and ongoing services that will come into this policy. I'm also here on behalf of our organization to say that we support the censuring of Director Wegeman. We are well aware of some of the statements that he has made publicly. I know the first time I came to your board, I was really insulted by one of the things that he said publicly. And it was during July, when it was just right after the Fourth of July celebration, when he said in 1776, all people were free. Well, let me tell you, my people were not free, 1776. And my point being that the truth needs to be stated. The truth needs to be continually stated in all public schools. And if we have directors that don't understand the fact that they have responsibility to speak the truth, then they need not have the opportunity to serve. So on behalf of Vibrant Schools, we will continue to support school districts that understand that critical race theory is just that, a theory of belief. But the truth can be backed by facts. And we expect each of your school districts to deal with the truth and the facts, and we will be here as watchdogs for both of your school districts.
Our next individual that has signed up to speak is Liz Scott.
Thank you, my name is Liz, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll be very quick, I just have three things I wanted to express. First, I wanted to thank this board for passing equity policy. If you look at school board ethics all over the state, the number one priority is providing education for the needs of each child. Of each child, that is equity, and that is what will help our students graduate and go on to be successful adults. It's just the beginning. Second, I want to thank Marty Schaefer and Alyssa Pearson for conducting an honest, ethical, and a bug board campaign for school board. Your conduct under adverse conditions is inspiring. And third, I want to pass on the comments I heard while doorbelling from parents of children currently in this, in school in the district. Many I talked with expressed gratitude and support for Superintendent Banner, especially his communication and his handling of the COVID crisis. Thank you again.
Thank you. Our next individual who signed up to speak and will be given three minutes is for a second license.
I attended the last workshop a few weeks ago, and during that workshop, you guys were presented two five-minute clips from Marco Chardon, who you guys have contracted with to train our staff, who in turn is training our teachers. You have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on this, and upon further research of Marco Chardon, and I have to wonder if you guys have done any more research outside of what has been presented to you. I found a poem that he himself wrote that I'd like to read to you. It says, "You ain't nothing. Survival's a vicious game, grab a tool, join a gang. Brown boy, you ain't nothing. In the hood, you'll remain consumed by the anger and pain till your blood pours out and on the concrete you lay slain. Brown boy, you ain't nothing. Join a team, hold heat, make a life in these streets. As a predator, super menace, your worth is worthless. Drop out, life ain't for you, drop out. This world hated you before you was born, drop out. Brown boy, you ain't nothing. You weed, smoke, and shadow dweller pariah of society. Be angry because we hate you, fear us because we fear you. You'll never become anything because we don't want you to, and neither do you. Brown boy, you ain't nothing." I cried the first time I read this, okay? I will work 10 jobs to send my cousin's four-year-old son, who is black, to a private school before I will let him come into this district and be told he is nothing, simply because the color of his skin. Paul, I want to say to you, thank you. Thank you for voting no against this. Thank you for voting no against racism. Thank you for voting no against any child being told you're not anything, because every child is something. Every child is special, and every child needs to walk through our doors being loved and told they are capable of anything. And to the rest of you, shame on you for supporting this, shame on you. It's just disgusting.
I want to ask Pat Minnigan to please cover his nose with this mask. If there's anybody else, I'm going to ask the same, please. Thank you.
I need some air, otherwise I can't breathe. This is called Flag Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag. They dragged him naked through the muddy streets, a feeble-minded black boy. And the charge, supposed assault upon an aged woman. Of the United States of America. One mile they dragged him like a sack of meal, a rope around his neck, bloody ear left dangling by the patriotic hand of Nordic youth. Boy of seventeen. And to the republic for which it stands. And then they hanged his body to a tree. Below the window of the county judge, whose pleadings for that battered human flesh were recycled by the brutish, raucous howls of men and boys and women in their bays. Brought out to see the bloody spectacle of murder in the style of thirty-three. Three thousand strong they were. One nation, indivisible. To make the tale complete, they built a fire. What matters that the stuff they burned was flesh and bone and hair and reeking gasoline. With liberty and justice, they cut the rope in bits and passed them out for souvenirs among the men and boys. The teeth, no doubt, on golden chains will hang about the favorite necks of sweethearts, wives, and daughters, and mothers, sisters, babies too. For all. Don't you hear the contempt and hate for our country and the pledge in our race, in that racist version of the pledge? I doubt you've heard it before. It and the poem Rebecca just read are part of the equity video you saw presented by Marco Chardon here a couple of weeks ago. But those two parts were omitted, censored from you. Chardon obviously thought they were important to be part of the full presentation. They represent his motives, and his true feelings will be imparted to everyone who sees and hears him speak. Why are you people allowing our kids to be subjected to these negative influences? Where are the positive, hopeful, inspiring messages? They're not in your equity policy. That policy is racist and divisive and will result in more divided society. It will dumb down academics and discipline. And it will be a heavy damper on the patriotic feelings students learn about our country. There's probably no country on earth that has made more progress and positive race relations over the years than the USA. But this district is failing to educate students in that prideful fact. Instead, your policy models segregation and mediocrity. You've been asleep at the switch while allowing the district to spend a quarter million dollars of taxpayer money next year on employees who seek speakers like Chardon to infect the district. And maybe like, like amount on a superintendent who could doubt it. You've dropped the ball. With a new board next month, perhaps you'll have an opportunity to correct course.
Our next person is racist Perez.
This is the first time I'm here. And I really don't want to be too many times because I cannot breathe. I'm aware of everything that's happening in this country. I'm Cuban. And I lived in Venezuela twenty-one years. In Cuba, good education. Okay. Venezuela, classism. That's the issue. That was the issue in my time in that country, twenty-one years. Here, I'm a minority. And I don't want nobody teach my kid, then he cannot be nothing because he is a minority. You guys understand me or don't understand me? I have a really bad accent, no, because I yeah, my name, my name is racist. But some people made jokes. And calling me, saying from crazy to racist. I'm not happy with that kind of joke. I never was good with it. Yeah, I don't like this. I don't have to tease. But this is the equity I know. Fairness. Justice. Fair. For all, I'm beyond color. I don't see color, I see a spiritual being in all these people and in myself. But not everybody is the same, I understand. I cannot wet my head, my fingers. This. My worry about survey. How are CPSD using it? Or protecting? I'm sorry. Protecting the children's information. Why I'm worried? Sorry. Because everything has been hacked in. Not only CPSD and my job two years ago. And my clinic from four years ago. And CPSD, my daughter supports information. I don't know. I really don't know. I received a letter, I did what the letter said.
Your time is up.
Okay, another day, thank you so much.
You're welcome. The next two minutes will be given to Kristen Merritt.
There are many things I'd rather be doing tonight, but a good man is under attack and I can't just sit by. Mr. Wegeman is and has been a great voice for hundreds of families in the district, and silencing him is silencing us. It is apparent that the new equity policy you recently passed is going to be a weapon that you clearly intend to use on those with different ideas or opinions. But I'm here to remind you that this policy does not supersede the US Constitution. We all have the right to free speech, even if you don't agree with it. Yet you are trying to take that right from one of your own board members. Ironically, it's the only one of you who has fought in our military to preserve that right. You may not like the things that Mr. Wegeman has said in discussions, but robust debate is what we should have, not censorship. This attempt tonight to silence him is nothing short of fascism. It is also a violation of your own equity policy that pretends to value diversity. It is obvious that the only diversity that matters here is diversity of color, not diversity of thought. That's quite hypocritical, since this is supposed to be an institution of learning. We should be encouraging discussions because that is where growth happens. We should be exploring the many paths to equality, not assuming there is only one way. And one thing is for sure, we should be respecting everyone's right to free speech in the process, not shutting some down. I'm glad that Mr. Wegeman has dared to ask the hard questions and has called out some of the issues in our culture today. That's called a conversation, and we should be wanting that, not punishing it. Open conversations are part of identifying problems, that is, if you want to fix them. The board, however, has decided conversations are not okay and is seeking to punish those who want them. And let me ask you this, if you are going to attach consequences and punishments for not endorsing or supporting the equity policy, then where is the new process? It seems to be missing. If one can simply be accused and punished, then this new policy is a very dangerous weapon and should be revisited immediately. It is obviously very much open to interpretation and to administer judgment and censorship based on your feelings or opinions is wrong. The relentless and coordinated attacks against Master Wegeman have been disgusting to watch. and quite frankly, a huge waste of tax dollars. And speaking of tax dollars, I would like to know how our district can justify almost doubling the salary of the equity diversity and inclusion specialists in two years. I'm guessing that is not the same pay scale that the teachers or nurses or bus drivers on, is it? Am I allowed to ask that or am I not endorsing and supporting the new equity policy too? This board is completely out of line and is acting unlawfully. In closing, I would like to remind the board of the nineteen sixty-four Supreme Court case New York Times versus Sullivan, in which they put into place a rigorous standard for maintenance of free political discussion. They also deemed that the Constitution does not protect libel and that claims made with reckless disregard of whether it was false or not are protected. In other words, this board is not protected from what they have done to Mr. Wagaman now and throughout the year. It would seem to me, I'm almost done.
Your time is up. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, I hope you sue Paul. I'll help you pay for it.
Our next individual we'd like to speak is Austin Lambert. Austin.
Hey, how's it going? This is my first time at one of these. I've got two boys that go to park lodges down the street. You know, I only get to see my kids on the weekends and it's hard to keep up on what they, they go through in school every week. Just having them on weekends, it's kind of mostly at their word or mostly what I get on the email from their teachers. I don't really have any hands-on thing with their work and what they go through each day. I just know that there's things coming up that, that stir up my heart in a bad way. When there's things coming up like the mandatory vaccination things and stuff like that. If there's something that they should have to be afraid of and run away from because they can't choose or their parents can't be talked to about before something happens. I just know that that's not in any way a part of any kind of equity that you guys are talking about. If, if somebody has to be treated like they have to be something to be accepted, well, then that's already wrong, first off. If you can't just be a child coming to learn and just be ready to learn everything that the world has to offer, if it's anything beyond that or taught that is different than that, then it's wrong. Period. If, if you have to worry about what color you are coming to the school, that's wrong. Period. If it's not about just being the best of who you are and who you can be and being given the tools for that, then you know, why should we be a part of it? The only thing that should be really happening in our schools is encouraging everything that they have within them to be, just be shaped, carved, and molded into the best that it could possibly be. Period. That's what I love and that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Is there a... D U K L A N B? There's no name on this card.
I did put my name on the card, I believe.
There is.
I'm sorry.
You're so welcome to come and speak.
I apologize for that. I swear I put my name on there. My phone number should be on there as well.
Yeah, there is a phone number.
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think if you would just share your name, we'll go ahead and do it again.
Oh, yes, of course. My name is Dawn Land. And I wanted to say that, first with a quote, "Four sworn seven years ago, our fathers brought forth on this continent a new nation conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal." Equal. Then a quote, which says from, from the policy that went about Clover Park School District Board of Directors is committed to fostering learning environments that support achievement, empowerment through equity, diversity, and inclusion. Does the board understand the difference between equity and equality? There are no guarantees in life. And I would have to say that as... As a white woman raising black children, I find it abhorrent to see government schools with policies that would teach my children to hate me. That's awful. Another quote would be, let's see, from the First Amendment. Congress, there shall be no laws respecting or establishing religion or prohibiting the free exercise of speech or bridging the freedom of that speech. And yet... A quote from the policy to censure Director Paul Wagaman for agreeing with and tacitly endorsing the use of so-called derogatory terms and engaging in conversations demonstrating a lack of commitment to the district's equity policy. You know, does, does he have to be in a hundred percent lockstep agreement? Shouldn't his opinion matter too? Shouldn't his thoughts, do my thoughts not matter? Do I have to be a certain color? Does, does, do my children's thoughts matter but not my own because they're black and I'm white? You know, this is awful policy that you folks are, this, this is why I homeschool my children because I keep them out of government schools like this that would teach, bring up my children to hate me. This, this is awful and you folks ought to be ashamed. Shame on you. You know? You are there as elected officials. You are there, you have no authority except through our consent. And many of us do not consent and you're trying to shut that down. You're trying to ignore the fact that we don't consent. Well, you will hear from us, all of us. There are many of us that don't agree with your egregious policies that teach children to hate. They teach them to hate each other and grow up feeling like they're less than. Thank you. I'm in for equality for all.
Our next individual is, the sign up is Paul Wolfstein. Paul, if you would come forward, we'll give you three minutes when you approach the mic.
Members of board, Superintendent Banner, I've been a member of this community for over forty years. I raised my children in this district and I'm very proud of the job that the educators in this district have done. I was on this board from nineteen eighty-three to nineteen eighty-seven. I have never seen in my history in this community a more divided election than we have seen in this last competition, this last challenge. I'm disappointed, dismayed, and disgusted. I do want to thank the board for the dedicated and compassionate hard work that they have done in the last several years. I want to thank them for studying and working with individuals in the community to adopt a very responsible diversity, equity, and inclusion policy. I want to thank the two incumbents who just ran in this election for the honest, truthful, positive campaigns that they ran despite the critical and negative attacks against them. My hope is that now that this election is over, that we as a community can move forward and get back to the positive and constructive education of our children. Thank you.
Next individual is Sheri Arkell.
Thank you, board and Superintendent Banner. First of all, this is off the cuff, but after forty years and I taught at many different places and I ended up over at Woodbrook. And I would have given my IT to have the staff development and training so I could understand my students better. It was all about student learning. It was all about academic achievement, but I didn't know who the learners were. And I had to learn that. And I was not prepared when I entered Woodbrook. I, I was much better when I left. I would have given anything for the equity program. Okay, no matter who sits on the school board, we need to hold each member accountable. This is a nonpartisan elected position. Every member of a school board in this state is well aware of ethical standards set forth for members. You can find the list of individual school director standards on the Washington State School Directors Association website. It says on that site, "We are as independently elected officials recognize and accept the responsibility of our role and our personal authority to act only within the structure of a school district's board of directors." There are a total of twenty-six standards to which each member is personally accountable. Trust is automatically given that each member will abide by these standards. Here are examples of expected standards which have recently been overlooked and documented. Under values and ethical behavior demonstrates commitment to equity and high standards of achievement for all students. Leadership respects the board's role in policymaking and supports all adopted board policies. Communication maintains civility and treats all people with respect. Accountability takes responsibility for his or her own actions and words. I encourage the school board to no longer assume that individual members have set aside their personal and political agendas, even though they claim otherwise. The emails, letters, social media posts, political involvement, organized efforts to disrupt the work of this school board are now well-known to this community. I made copies of these standards for each of the school board members and for the superintendent banner. I highlighted thirteen out of the twenty-six that need to be addressed based on what I have observed over the last five months. Going forward, I along with others will be holding this school board accountable for putting student equity and achievement above anything else.
Thank you. Next individual that fell off the card is Mr. Darwin Peters II.
Hello, everybody. My name is...
Can we raise that?
I would love it if somebody... Thank you for being equitable. It's fine, I can be. All right. Hello, my name is Darwin Peters and I'm a parent of four children in the Clover Park School District. I'm gonna go a little off cuff for what I wrote because after hearing two poems that were misrepresented and misinterpreted, I want to say that that is further evidence of why we need to have equity and why we need to teach our kids the history of this country, the pain, the hurt, the frustration, the good and the bad. Because while we have come leaps and bounds, there was a starting point and there's a reason that those poems were written and they were not ever meant to be interpreted the way that they were presented today. If anybody would like to hear about why those poems were written that way, I'd love to discuss it later on. Anyway, over the past few months, I've witnessed some of the most nasty, vile, hateful, and destructive behavior that I've ever seen in this city. I was also victim to it. I've watched an election that was supposed to be a nonpartisan election with the well-being of our kids at the forefront. They used to shake comments and lies and commissals aimed to destroy characters, impact families, and their lives. However, the election is over and the people have spoken and the results are continuing to be counted. So today, I'm here to issue a few challenges to the board. I challenge you to continue to listen to the community. Do not allow the bullying words and threats of small groups attempt to force you in any direction, but rather continue to keep all students at the forefront of all that you do. To our parents, my fellow parents, so many have spoke loud from May until now. And so I challenge you to be as active in this school district as your words were. Find out what you can do to volunteer. Find out how you can help improve the schools that your children go to. Simply do more. The time for just talking has passed and we, the community of Lakewood, owe it to our Clover Park kids to do more. Thank you.
Our next person will be... Brittany Guehres. Brittany?
Thank you. I was also here at the last month's meeting and I did receive a response to that and which I just want to say, there's obviously a lot of other things going on politics-wise and I just, I'm a parent, okay? I am barely starting to catch on to everything that's happening, but what I can tell you is that I have no idea why you would send me a letter stating that I am working with the superintendent and Dr. Chen. I'm not. That was my whole initial problem. That's why I came to you. I went through, you know, the chain of command to tell you that I was having an issue that wasn't working. And so I'm just, you know, if I'm supposed to go look at your district website, you know, I'm also hearing that there was some sort of virus that happened at some point that is why you have phone numbers and contact information to people who aren't even employed in the district anymore. So as a parent, I've been trying to tell you that your website, it's not easy to navigate. I cannot find the information that I need to find. I cannot find the people who I need to talk to and the procedures that I am supposed to follow in order to be heard. My daughter has been out of school for over two months now because of the mask mandates and the inability for people to understand what's written in it. I literally was mailed the K-12 requirements. I am in full, full compliance with the K-12 requirements. I've had to write, like I told you before, over six, get written notes, six different times from my doctor. As a working mom, I'm sure you can understand how tirelessly I am exhausted of having to do this. They are busy. They don't have time for this. Okay? The other problem is, so I did this, I'm in full compliance with it. A mask that my daughter's trying to wear is in the K-12 requirements, a face shield with a drape attached to the bottom of it, or a wrap, it says, which is what your district has selected. I'm not sure where because like you said, it was supposedly Dr. Chen's verbal, I'm not sure what that means, his verbal discussion that you had on the phone with him. But I, I was given also an email from your COVID response coordinator. And she told me that there was no health order from Dr. Chen so that you were in fact following the K-12 requirements. So all this tells me is that maybe you don't have a plan, you don't know what's going on. Maybe, you know, people obviously aren't in communication with each other, but at the end of the day, I have done nothing but sat here and tried to work with you guys to try to figure it out. Okay? If you want to sit here and say, oh, we're in the middle of a pandemic, it's confusing, sure, but don't you dare sit here and tell me that I have disregard for anybody's health, my child's health. I don't. We're in full compliance here. Why is she not missing this? Why is she not at school? I had to go to school and talk to the principal for somebody to actually update your district website and with whatever decision you made to have a cloth around the sides and the bottom, that was not updated until I showed up at the school physically. I have gotten emails and emails back and forth stating this, the information's not there. I need this to give to my doctor because she tells me we're in full compliance with the K-12 standards. There is no other health order that's out. Now I'm feeling stupid because I'm wasting the doctor's time to have to write all these doctor's notes. I work full-time too. You think I have time to go, this is the sixth or seventh doctor's note I had to get. Okay? Not only that, I also want to address the fact that I stood before the board last month and told you that even though my daughter was wearing the face shield, the cloth thing around the sides and everything that is required by your school, multiple times she was forced to wear a cloth mask. That's child abuse. Look it up. It's a law obstructing the child's ability to breathe. Also, go forward and I went there to the school and told them, no, under no circumstances can she wear the cloth mask. I had her call me and say, oh, oh, she wants to wear it. Can she wear it like a what? No, she cannot. That's neglect. And nobody cares. That's neglect. And nobody cares. Leadership that listens to who?
Next individual who requests to speak to the board is James Cooper.
I think, I think I got a subject that everybody here would agree to, okay? And that's academic excellence. Okay, the, the numbers are fifty one percent that meet E L A, thirty eight percent that meet math standards and forty percent that meet science things. As Mr. Peter said, it's, it's time to do something. Okay, yes, the election's over and I challenge the board to determine what is the problem. Actually, I'd like each board member to make an assessment of these numbers and identify what is the problem? Why are we here? That's what you guys get paid for, academic excellence. Okay, that's what this is all about. You got the equity policy that'll all play out. But teaching these kids, okay, is the most important job you guys got. This has been this way for years. So I challenge you to write to me, what is your assessment? Each one of you, board members, what is your assessment? Why are these scores so low and what is your plan of action to deal with it? You should each know that. All right, I'm sure the superintendent knows and I'm sure the principals know. You guys ought to hold them accountable and figure it out. Right? Now, if anybody disagrees with this, please let me know. Okay? So that's, that is my request. The other request is, I'd like to have copies of the building utilization report, five years worth. That's a very good report and it's a simple report because I was on the board. And I saw that if one thousand kids started high school and these numbers are not quite right. One thousand freshmen, seven hundred and fifty sophomores, six fifty juniors and four fifty seniors. Never did I get an answer, what happened to those kids? Okay, this is a pretty important report. It's the most simple one you guys got and it tells a lot. Oh, here's a good one. On this academic excellence, these numbers that I just showed you. If you have those numbers and you have eighty eight percent graduation, somebody please explain to me, and this is a request. Where's the difference? What is the, where's that difference? If they're getting fifty percent or less and they're graduating eighty eight percent, where's the delta? What, what is the problem? And appreciate your time and I hope you guys can really begin to work on those issues. And good try, Paul. Good try, okay? I think quite unprofessional.
All right, that was our last public comment, so we heard from our public and we will now move to. I'm going to ask if our superintendent would now share your superintendent reports. So thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, President Schaefer and Ward. Regarding public comments from October eleventh board meeting there, all comments have been appropriately responded to. I would like to keep in front of you the issue of staffing shortages. This is a nationwide and statewide issue in a variety of employment markets to include public education. District level staff, including me, several of my council members, department supervisors and consultant teachers have been substituting in classrooms to offset the substitute shortage. I want to say thank you to all staff from across the district who are going above and beyond to support our students. Regarding athletics, we've had several students from Lake High School compete in the cross-country state competition this past weekend. The school took eleventh overall in state. The Lake's football team has advanced to the state title playoff bracket. The Lake's volleyball team has qualified for districts in the state playoffs. And the Lake's Lady Lancer soccer team has placed first in the three A Pierce County League and advanced to the state title playoff bracket. This is the first time in, I believe, fifteen years that the Lady Lancers have taken first place in their league. We wish all of these students success in the classroom and on their respective playing fields. Regarding community engagement, I recently met with the executive director of the Lakewood YMCA, Mr. Toby Roberts. We discussed opportunities to engage our Clover Park School District students during non-school days between winter break and the end of the school year. We continue to work on that and I will have more information if that progresses. I also recently met with Corinne Wall and Lamarcio Mitchell from Twin Star Credit Union and we are discussing ways to engage our staff, our students and our parents in financial literacy and education and support opportunities. At this time, because of COVID, the discussions have been around online and virtual opportunities for all three of those groups. I'll end my report tonight by introducing Mr. Tim Stoltz, the principal from Clover Park High School, and tonight, Mr. Stoltz will be presenting on how the school is building inclusion into every classroom. Mr. Stoltz, the microphone is yours.
Well, good evening, members of the school board, President Schaefer, Superintendent Banner, it is an honor to be here tonight to showcase the work of Clover Park High School. My name is Tim Stoltz and I am the proud principal of Clover Park. You know, our theme for tonight's presentation is building inclusion into every space. So why focus on inclusionary practices? Well, for many years, we have worked to embed supports throughout our school programs, but the achievement results for our students with IEPs and/or in need of multilingual support have remained below that of their general ed peers. In the next few slides, we will look at that data. Additionally, the C E E data we reviewed from staff indicates that they want to support students differently and to provide early interventions when students are struggling. The list on the right side of this slide is a snapshot of the various efforts that we have made in the previous years to promote student success.
Mr. Stoltz, I'm sorry to break in on you. We're not seeing your slides. Can you share your screen?
That would be helpful, wouldn't it? Well, look, I had it shared earlier. Technology, not my deal. Okay, so here, here's the slide. These are some of the, the various things that we have worked to support, worked to promote in our school. And to many respects, these efforts have been effective for many, as evidenced by the increase in graduation rates, but they haven't helped us reach all of our students. All right, so student enrollment at Clover Park High School this year remains exceptionally diverse. Seventy eight percent of our students are low income and eighteen percent are multilingual learners. Sixteen percent are students with an IEP and this, these were the numbers at the beginning of the school year and those numbers have only increased. Our four-year graduation rate has remained at or above the state average for the last several years, with the exception of two thousand and nineteen, when we did see a drop. When you'll notice though, from this slide, as indicated in the green and gold lines, that our special ed and multilingual students, while also at or above the state average, still lag behind the graduation rate of the school. In the last few years, students across the state have not participated in the Smarter Balance Assessment or SBA due to COVID. In two thousand and nineteen, for our tenth grade students who took the English Language Arts Assessment, the passing rate was fifty four point one percent, which was a nine-point gain from two thousand and eighteen. And that is the first year that this became a tenth grade assessment. Well, clearly, in order to demonstrate a higher level of proficiency, we need to support all of our students with grade level coursework. In math, our proficiency rates lag far below where we want them to be. At seventeen percent, which is where we were the year before. Last school year, we had a very traditional model of supporting student growth in math. But clearly, those interventions did not achieve the goals that we set at the beginning of the year. Well, as a result, for the two thousand twenty twenty-one school year, we began working with the University of Washington Center for Educational Leadership Team, focusing on student engagement and providing feedback to students. This school year, we have also implemented several co-taught math classes at the algebra and geometry level to provide differentiated instruction in on-grade level classes. Well, the last piece of data to share with you is from our own internal course success rates for multilingual students and special ed students as compared to overall school averages. Overall, the numbers are in green, multilingual is in blue and special ed is in gold. While the special ed passing rates are similar to the overall rates, the multilingual passing rates generally lag approximately six to eight percentage points below the overall averages. So as a result, we determined that we needed to pursue the co-teaching models with an all-in commitment. Because if we are ever going to be successful in supporting all students at grade level, then all students have to be in grade level classes with equitable access to grade level curriculum. The overall, the other focus for the school year is academic recovery. The last eighteen months have been challenging for our students and their families. But we are not interested in just going back to where we were pre-COVID. We want to see all of our students excel. So what are the models of co-teaching that we are using at CP? Well, the first is a true co-teaching model where both the content teacher and the support teacher share equally in the role of delivering instructional content and providing support to students in the room. Well, the second is support facilitation. And that happens when the content teacher is the lead for the delivery of tier one instruction or that base level of instruction for the whole class, while the support teacher works to eliminate barriers to instructional access or provide scaffolded support. It's important to note that these roles are also fluid in most of our classrooms and may vary depending upon the type of activity that the class is working through. All right, so this slide shows the numbers of students being served in this model as well as the number of teachers and the partnerships and courses being taught. Currently, there are eight sections of co-taught E L A or English that serve seventy nine students with an IEP and a hundred and ninety five students without. There are also five sections of co-taught math at various levels that serve forty four students with an IEP and a hundred and seventeen students without. In addition, there are sixteen co-taught English sections for M L L students and three sections of academic seminar that provides for credit recovery for our M L L students. Overall, there are twenty two teachers who partner together in a variety of settings to provide supportive learning environments and activities for approximately eight hundred and twenty students. All right, so in addition to the co-teaching instructional model, there are many other inclusionary practices built into our work this year. They include social emotional learning supports and reflections into our classrooms, continuing to build upon restorative practices, working with the University of Washington Center for Ed Leadership to empower engagement in our math classrooms. Additionally, our staff is developing an equity committee to gather student voice and examine systemic barriers to student achievement. Our DISC team is facilitating professional development around equitable instructional practices and our M T S S or multi-tier systems of support committee has been meeting to assess and monitor students' social emotional needs and tier two and three supports. So how are inclusionary practices aligned to the board priorities, the district improvement plan and the school's annual action plan? One, closing the achievement gap by ensuring that all students have access to and supports within grade level courses. Two, by implementing effective instructional practices based upon student needs. Three, by implementing high-quality, standards-based district curriculum aligned vertically and horizontally to college and career readiness standards. Your own quote, that all students have access to and support in pursuing their college and career goals. Four, by making sure that all students and staff have a safe and inclusive learning environment. Five, by ensuring that all students have equal access to high-quality district resources. All right, so our annual action plan focuses our, focuses our work on all of these components with a lens for equity and inclusion. We want to make sure that our most effective teaching practices are deployed to our students with the greatest needs. We are promoting increased skill development and reading, writing and math skills as students recover academically. Co-teaching also provides us with better information to our families because there are two teachers now in the classroom to observe when students struggle. This information can then be passed along to families so that we can work together to support learners. Well, some of our successes include an incredible graduating class of seniors last year who earned fourteen million dollars in scholarships and awards, highlighted by a Gates Millennial Scholarship Award to Stanford University, presidential scholarships awarded from Columbia University and North Carolina Honors College, as well as three full ride Act Six scholarships. Two years of virtual Arlington Project continues to be a high priority for us. Also implementing restorative practices two years ago and then continuing this year has had an impact on our culture. Also, this past summer, the work that was done between our students and staff in a variety of programs was amazing to watch. From Warrior Academy to Warriors of Change, being able to work with students from incoming ninth grade to rising seniors has paid major dividends in the relationship between staff and students. And the work that we have been able to do with the University of Washington and our math department has been awesome to be a part of. Ultimately, I really want to celebrate the amazing teachers, administrators, support staff and our incredible partners from the communities such as communities and schools of Lakewood that I get to work with every single day and partnering to serve a beautiful group of students who are growing every day. So in moving forward, some of the areas of focus include social emotional support for students after eighteen months of isolation, where their only interaction may, was largely through social media. Clearly, we want to continue to work with students to demonstrate their understanding on a variety of standardized tests as well as improving our attendance rates. We want to work with students throughout our school to develop strong academic skills and behaviors. And we want to continue to develop our focus on inclusionary practices. I will close with an expression of thanks for the support that we have received from the district office as well as from the school board. It is a privilege to work with all of you. Lastly, I would like to recognize our parents, our students and staff and attendants. If you are, if you are quote unquote here tonight, there, representing Clover Park, please stand. The gains that we have made on the board goals takes each and every one of us moving in the same direction. And I appreciate working with every single one of you. Thank you. What questions can I answer, answer for you?
First of all, Tim, thank you so much for your report. I'd like to ask you, how long have you been the amazing principal of Clover Park High School?
Well, I don't know about amazing. That may be a different measure, but this is my eighth year.
So much. You know, just the other day, I unfortunately had Thank you so much. You know, just the other day, I unfortunately had problem with the tooth and I got to go to the dentist. And one of your graduates was there doing all the free work. And I just want you to know, we we hear these things about partnerships with Clover Park Tech's college career. We hear about that. Uh, Act Six scholarships, we hear about these amazing fourteen million dollar worth of scholarships and empower people to go to a college. But when you really see a person who's really taking care of you, it really does laugh. And it was so wonderful to be able to have interaction with the Clover Park High School graduate. So just thank you for bringing real human beings into our community that are effective and helpful. It was a direct plan for me. I also want to acknowledge that in your eight years, my guess is that uh, there are some difficulty and different nuances that you're facing right now. So I'm curious if you could share with us a little bit of how you, you know, you mentioned learning recovery. How you have seen your team be able to keep at that level inspiration during the difficulty of all the requirements around COVID?
Well, that's a long answer. Because clearly, that requires a lot of tireless efforts on behalf of on the part of our teachers and and our support staff, our community partners, our administrative team, I mean, long hours. You know, I had lots of of teachers talk about, you know, planning well into the night or grading well into the night. It's, uh, it it really has been a lot of work trying to uh, to help our students navigate all of the 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 challenges of recovering academically. A lot of students came in very excited to be here, very excited to be a part of school again and to experience some semblance of normalcy in their lives. Um, but when, uh, but when faced with, uh, trying to to be students, truly students again and not kind of a virtual semblance of a student. Uh, some of the the reality of that was 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 pretty hard for many of our students and families alike. And so it's just been a tireless effort on on the teacher's part and um, and just a lot of conversation. We work hard together.
Yeah, thank you very much. My insight would be that they probably never worked harder than they are right now. And I just want to acknowledge how appreciative we are from especially those who are in person tonight. So you stood up and we clap, but here to say that our hearts go out to you for the difficulty of what you're facing. Your willingness to take a holistic approach to these students and as your principal shared, there's a late nights and the effort that you've made. And we we do find you amazing and I hope you hear that. So, thank you. Other board questions or comments?
Evening, Mr. Stolz. Thank you so much for your report this evening. Uh, starting on slide thirteen, uh, where you talked about co-teaching and supports. Uh, you 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 used the word barriers. You're trying to overcome barriers. Can you give me some examples of some of the barriers that you're working through?
Oh, sure. That's, uh, so a lot of the barriers come to us just from, uh, so for instance, a multilingual learner. Uh, the barriers are simply accessing the language, right? So if a if a multilingual learner, somebody who is a newcomer or a recent, uh, somebody who's recently to the country um, encounters, I mean, they're enrolled in, in say, an algebra or a biology, a biology class, right? A biology class is something that has a lot of 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 really specific terminology that's associated with it, right? And so accessing that language is sometimes really difficult when you're still learning English. So, um, you know, in the in the MLL co-taught English classes, a lot of our, uh, our teacher teams are working together to support uh, classroom teachers that don't that really don't even have that uh, that co-teaching support, if that makes any sense. So a biology teacher may send information to the co-teaching team so that they can they can maybe help incorporate some of those termino that terminology into the into the English class. But the the bottom line is, um, as an English teacher, I I would be standing maybe at the front of the room for some of the direct instruction or the lead instruction type activities. But I couldn't be standing in the back of the room at the same time looking to see where students were struggling or to see where uh, students might be encountering challenges with the vocabulary. So the MLL teacher can see that from another perspective and then intervene fairly quickly so that they have uh, the opportunity to help that student remove that barrier. It may be simply the definition of a single, a single word that if it goes, if it doesn't get clearly defined, that becomes a barrier to that student's understanding. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. You know, having clear definitions is always important, is it not?
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah. The, if you go to slide fifteen, uh, you talked about restorative practices. Can you give me some examples of what you're doing there, please?
Oh, sure. So restorative practices is a, that is a, a practice of helping kids really restore themselves to the classroom environment in a positive and productive way. Right? And so, uh, when a, when a kid has some type of an emotional response uh, that becomes inappropriate, disruptive in a classroom, we can then bring that teacher, that student together in, uh, maybe in my office. And we go through a series of of kind of just, I mean, they're just questions that ask the teacher and the student to be reflective around what happened, uh, who was kind of harmed by the situation? How do we move forward? Right? How do we heal? And that that essentially is what restorative practices is all about, is healing the harm that has that has happened in order to move forward. Now, it's also important to note that restorative practices can be used as a proactive measure as well. And so when we, one of the things that we do is, uh, students in classrooms will sometimes uh, circle up in, I mean, in a normal school year, right, when we're not all sitting in rows. But they'll, uh, they'll circle up and and talk about some of the barriers or some of the challenges that they're facing. That may be as simple as a temperature check at the beginning of a class. How are you feeling? How do we help support one another in making sure that our classroom environment is a positive and safe space? Right? So restorative practices is just, it's about, it it again, it's kind of like that restore restoration. It's healing, it's forgiveness, it's grace, and it's wrapping our arms around kids.
Okay, well, I, you know, that that makes sense to me. So when you, when you're sitting in a class with a particular student, then, you know, how much time do you, you know, how much time is it gonna take to teach all the things that need to be taught? And then deal with the things where you're just talking about with empathy. You know, so if if the majority of my time is spent on empathy, then am I getting the learning done? So, you know, how do we do that?
Yeah, and I I hear you. That's a really good question, and sometimes it it is time intensive. Uh, sometimes it's a matter of, uh, kind of the proactive piece. So if we invest ourselves in in this practice, then it helps keep us from having to deal with disruptions in the future. Right?
Agreed, yeah, you know, I mean, certainly, certainly if you get some of those things fixed, you know, the the problem is is allocating. You know, I mean, you have six and a half hours a day, right? Hundred and eighty days a year. And and so when you start allocating your your resources, basically your time with the students, and and then we do force multipliers, what you have, when you're talking about your support teachers, that makes sense. You know, and now we have more adult supervision helping each child, you know, get to where they need to be. But, you know, when I look, let's see, start going to the one of the pages. I guess it's page fourteen. Uh, where is, you you talked about, uh, the number of, uh, IEP students mixed in with the others, and you're saying there's some value to putting them in with the other students. And and I I think I understand that. That makes sense to me. But what happens? When they start getting behind, you know, you're you're spending a lot of time with them. You you get the whole team together, the whole group.
So, so the beautiful part about the co-teaching practices, I mean, having the co-teachers in the in the same room is the learning doesn't stop. Right? So the the lead teacher may take, may take the, may continue on with the learning while the support teacher is also providing supports in the background for some of those students who are in need of additional additional supports, right? Um, it it, those roles can also be reversed where the support teacher takes the lead in the discussion while the the, uh, the content teacher goes back and and helps kind of address a mathematical error or a an English vocabulary terminology kind of error that the student is is experiencing. So all and all, it's become a very efficient model.
Okay, I I I mean, at the university level, you know, you have your profits teaching, and if you're not getting it, you can always go see that the teaching assistant in off hour later, right? And so instead of you're doing it at the same time.
Yeah, I I will, I will tell you, if you, if we ever want to get serious about changing the face of education, it would be to put two teachers in every single classroom. Sorry if I said that out loud. Sorry if I said that out loud, Mr. Banner, but.
You 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 did say two teachers in every classroom? Is that what you said?
You bet.
I didn't hear. Did you say two teachers in every classroom?
I I you did. I I did say that.
Okay.
I I may get scolded later, but I did.
Okay, and 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 then on slide sixteen, um, you called inclusive learning environment, and then you went over to point seventeen and, uh, you talked about helping those with the highest needs. So how how does that work? Can you talk a little bit about that, please?
Well, employing the the effective teaching strategies with this for the students with the highest need is the co-teaching. It's the co-teaching, it's also utilizing the strategies that we're, uh, that we're working on with the University of Washington Center for Ed for Educational Leadership. We we, we're continually working on improving our instructional practice. There's no question about it.
And then, and then on the the last slide, fourteen, um, you're working to improve student attendance. What what's the reason we don't have good attendance? What's the problem?
Oh, again, that's a long answer. I I think in many respects, uh, while we have uh, kind of historically struggled with, uh, with student attendance, I I think part of it is is just helping our our students and families kind of recognize the the importance of the work that they that they have the opportunity to engage in every single day. And in in addition to, I mean, part of the co-teaching model is also to address that, right? So that, so that as we remove academic barriers to student success, then students are gonna feel more connected in the classroom. Right? If we're, if we're removing some of those, what may be small, simple barriers, right? If I've, if I've got, again, if I've got thirty kids in a classroom, I'm not gonna see or notice all of the the challenges that a that particular students may experience. But within the co-teaching, we stand a much better chance of addressing those of of addressing those challenges and helping kids feel more connected and feel more successful in that space. And so that's, that's part of it. It is part of also is working with our community partners or the Asian Pacific Islander Cultural Center. Um, working with that partnership, working with our upward bound partners, working with communities and schools, that's every day. Um, and we've got a lot of people at work trying to, trying to identify the barriers to student attendance as well as address the the need. But obviously, this year, the other compounding factor for student attendance is quarantine and isolation. Right? So, uh, if we've got a hundred students who are experiencing significant attendance issues, approximately fifty percent of those are students who have been quarantined or isolated. Alright, they have been identified as exposed or or potential exposures, that kind of thing. And we've, and they've had to be isolated from the school community. That is a real, that's a real challenge.
Now, most of those, most of the students you have now, they all have their own laptops, right? So can they come in and go online to catch up if they're quarantined?
They can, yes, absolutely.
Thank you. I appreciate your report.
You're welcome.
Alright, Tim, thank you. Was there any other closing comments that you had if you could cut you off?
Me? No, I'm good. I'm good. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you as well. Thanks for all the hard work and the trust that you will give or send out some appreciation to your staff. Superintendent Banner, was there any other comments?
I will just reiterate our thanks to the Clover Park High School staff and administration, and that completes Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Last month, the board signed the annual, had the annual signing of our standard operating procedures. Last meeting was the first time where one individual, uh, did not vote to sign it. Unfortunately, you ended up signing it. You voted no, then you signed it abstaining. And so we're gonna go back and re-sign our documents actively this time tonight. So last week's was, last month was not done correctly.
So how do you, how do you want me to sign it this time?
Well, if you voted no, then you wouldn't sign it. You wouldn't, and so.
So you just want to leave it blank?
No, uh, I think that you are choosing to leave the blank as you go to no. So if you vote no, you can't sign abstaining. You have to vote no. You have to sign no. It's easiest probably just not to sign, you know? But don't write abstaining, please. Make sure that whatever you, if you choose that.
So so what words, what word should I put on there? Do you want me to put no? I just don't want to leave it blank.
If you voted no, then I would assume you would not sign it. If you voted no, you certainly would not sign it inaccurate by saying abstaining because you didn't. So we want it done correctly this time, and so I would say don't sign it, or else sign, no, you have those two options. But the rest, then vote yes, I think you have a right to sign it. Okay, upon completion of the signing of the standard operating procedures, we will now move to consent agenda items twenty-two dash zero thirty-one. Twenty-two dash zero forty, is there a motion?
Someone?
Made by Carol, seconded by Alyssa. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, and raise your right hand. And so it is, the consent agenda has passed four to one. We will now move to our individual accent items. The first one is twenty-two dash zero four one, application for strengthening the career and technical education for the Twenty-First Century Act Perkins five secondary allocations grant for year twenty, twenty-two. Is there a motion? Made by Alyssa and seconded by Anthony. It's Superintendent, I know we've been briefed on this, but would you speak to twenty-two dash zero forty-one, please?
Certainly, approval of this action authorizes the district to accept the federal Perkins grant supporting our career and technical education department. Per policy six one zero zero P one, all grants greater than seventy-five thousand dollars require board approval. This grant is for one hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. This grant supports the career and technical education program to include software and hardware required in CTE programs at our middle and high schools, CTE student organizations, classroom materials, supplies and consumables as well as staff. And I do recommend approval of this resolution.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. Any questions or comments from the board? Not seen any, then I will say all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And motion passes unanimously. Twenty-two dash zero four two, the negotiated agreement between the Clover Park School District and the educational support personnel of Clover Park, is there a motion? Made by Carol and seconded by Alyssa. And then Superintendent Banner, would you please speak to twenty-two dash zero forty-two?
Yes, approval of this action is the board's ratification and acceptance of the bargain agreement with the ESPCP. Both bargaining teams came together to bargain in good faith and have come to an agreement that meets the board's established bargaining parameters. I'm thankful to Lori McStay, Executive Director for Human Resources and the district team, and also to Irene Oda, President of the ESPCP and her team for coming to an agreement that supports the interest of the employees, the interest of the school district, and most of all, the interest of the students in the Clover Park School District. And I do recommend approval of this action.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Paul?
Yeah. How many, how many employees are in this union?
Greg, you wanna give me an estimate?
Six fifty?
Six hundred and fifty?
Yeah, they're roughly forty to forty-five percent around forty.
Okay, so it's, it's a pretty big percentage of our total. Okay, so, and then, and we said, what? Seventy-seven percent voted in favor of that, is that forty, seventy-seven percent of the six fifty? Or is it something less than that?
So the union has their bylaws and their procedures and processes. What I can tell you about their processes is that their percentage for voting is the number of folks that voted, that took part in the vote. But we don't engage in pros, in, we don't engage in their bylaws or their leadership.
I, I, I understand, so, so about how many people voted for this?
Again, that's not a question that I ask Irene. She just reports to us what her percentage for ratification was. We don't engage in their accounts or their processes.
Well, I, I, I guess the reason for my question is, I, I received an email from a person that's in that union that felt that things weren't communicated very well to the whole body. And so it's seventy-seven percent ratified this thing with that seventy-seven percent of all of those people. Or is it some subset that just showed up to vote at seventy-seven percent of that? So we could have a very small percentage of people from that side that said okay to this. That, that's troubling to me. Because we're not only as school board directors who are responsible for our students, we're responsible for our staff. If, if things haven't been communicated fairly to them, that's a problem from my perspective.
I would agree, however, that's the union's process. So the union would need to be the ones that communicated. We have our relationship with the union. And then the union has their rules. They come to a vote based off their guidelines. And that's not something we get involved in, nor have we ever.
Yeah, I would just reiterate that the district does not engage in or interfere with the governance of our bargaining units.
And I did communicate that to your boss in an email as well, so.
Yeah, just, just interesting, you know, I mean, a, again, we're, we're talking about you know, we, we had a lot of discussion about equity. And if some people didn't get their voice heard, or they haven't been communicated to, that's, that's an equity problem to me. And so anyhow, it's, it's been stated for the record, so. I'm ready for the vote.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I really appreciate those who chose to vote and, and go to their meeting and have the options and what was available and what was in their contract. I appreciate them doing that because we know that the ESCPC, ESCPA, you know, there's some of the hardworking employees that we have. And it's a known fact that, you know, when you have students who they look for at school, well, it's not usually board members. It's, 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 it's the drivers, it's the food services, it's the secretaries, it's the, it's the janitors. And these people, daily, they're serving our kids and helping our buildings look the way they do, serving food. And I appreciate, I appreciate them, and I appreciate the effort of Lori's group and, and with the union representative. So thank you very much for getting this done, so we can move forward.
I'll add one thing on that. I, I agree with Carol with the briefing from the, the district staff, Lori McStay. I, I came out of that briefing very, very positive and thinking, hey, we, we.
I just want you to be reminded that the briefing was in executive session, so let's. I'm just asking to be careful.
For unions, absolutely. They don't try to get in contracts, not in executive session.
I, it was part of the agenda review, I don't remember that being said. So if we were briefed in an agenda review.
On this, I'm just simply reminding you, let's be careful that when you share about the briefing from the HR department, that you wouldn't wanna be careful not to show things that were, that would have been revealed in executive session. Very simple.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions, Paul? Anyone else? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed can be the same. And so pass four to one, right, right, no. Our next item is twenty-two dash zero forty-three, twenty-two dash zero forty-three, the century of Director Paul Wagner. And I'm looking to see if there is a motion. Motion made by Alyssa, is there a second? Seconded by Carol. And then I would like to give us an opportunity because there's been a question around the century. And so I would like to read it as a way of bringing everybody up to speed on it. So twenty-two dash zero four three says, whereas the fellow site, for someone to take the ongoing and regular operation of the Clover Park School District in pursuit of OCW forty-two dash thirty dash one ten, the Board of Directors met in executive session on October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one to discuss complaints brought against a public employee. And whereas Clover Park School District Board of Directors is committed to creating and fostering learning environments that support student achievement and empowerment through equity diversity and whereas the Clover Park School District Board of Directors acknowledges that present board policy one line zero nine, the board is responsible for understanding the district's systematic approach to equity and holding the district accountable for closing opportunity gap to eliminating disparities and empowering diverse voices. And whereas Director Wagner has engaged in communications that do not endorse or support this common goal, now therefore be it resolved that the Clover Park School District Board of Directors censure Director Paul Wagner for agreeing with and passively endorsing the use of derogatory terms regarding district staff charged with implementation of equity and diversity in the district and engaging in conversations demonstrating a lack of commitment to the district's equity policy. Any questions or comments on that? Go ahead, Alyssa.
Okay, I wrote mine down ahead of time, so I'm gonna read it. Paul, the comments you have repeatedly made about race and gender over the past years have been completely unacceptable. I wish I would have publicly spoke out sooner, but I always wanted to believe the comments were unintentional and you could learn from your mistakes. Unfortunately, that was not the case. Your comments have ramped up over the past year or so. Most recently, you were included in a string of emails that were released to the public referring to equity employees in our district as race pimps and comparing them to Jesse Jackson and Al Sharpton. You were not only on the emails, but agreed with the horrific contents of the message. We have worked hard to move our district forward, and you have been a part of tearing the community apart simply due to the fact you do not agree with the equity policy because you bought into the politicized rhetoric that it is the same thing as the critical race theory. You don't want to follow our standard operating procedures, you want to create division, and you're always focused on being right. You do not care who you hurt in the process, and you will never apologize for any wrongdoings. When you are called out on your behavior, when you are called out on your behavior, you tend to lash out and play the victim. You also insult others' intelligence, saying we're uneducated when we don't agree with you, and have even gone as far as calling us Marxists. Let me be clear when I say you are not the victim. Your actions and work speak for themselves, and I refuse to stand here and remain silent. You have not, you do not have the best interest of our students in mind, you care about yourself and have no remorse for your actions or hurtful words. Our students are watching and listening, and it's sad that a leader of our district says racist and misogynistic comments. I'm going to give some examples of your hurtful words, and I hope that you realize there is a, never a time when these comments are okay. You need to do better. In addition to the race, race pins email that was already discussed, you have said the following racially insensitive comments. In an October two thousand nineteen workshop, in an equity breakout session relating to the new policy or relating to equity, you said in front of district leaders in some black communities, it is okay to call women bitches. I have heard you say the cotton picking hands numerous times during main meetings. And I also think it's important to highlight the misogynistic comments as well as I have heard many. In the February twenty-second workshop, I mentioned that this would be my last for a while as my daughter was set to be born that Friday due to her size. In response to that, you said, are you lying around watching TV and eating bonbons? I could not believe what I heard, and others heard it too and mentioned it to me. In case you were wondering, none of that affects a baby size, and no, I was working forty hours a week and taking care of a toddler. You have also asked Carol and I repeatedly what we're making our families for dinner, and if we're gonna make cookies and bring them into meetings. I've never heard you make similar comments to the mail board members. During our superintendent search, I came to the evening forum without my at the time one month old son. You asked me who was watching my baby, and when I said my husband, you were shocked. You made a comment along the lines of, really, you left the baby at home with just him? During the meeting, during a meeting with staff and more members, you said your son could not focus at school because the girls were wearing short skirts to the football games. And the last thing I will mention tonight, a couple of weeks ago, a member of your circle who per the emails that were released was supposed to be the bad cop of my opponent's campaign, said the following about me being a working mom. The question is, who is taking care of her little children while she is taking on the world? If she favors a career over raising her children, is she really fit to oversee the raising of other children? Children in the school as a board member? Working because of necessity, as many moms do, is quite different than working to increase your affluence or position. Daycare is fine, but what happens when children mature? There are too many latchkey kids running around while their parents pay more attention to their careers than the welfare of their children. You were asked to publicly disavow your spokesperson, and you remained silent. This was your opportunity to show that you are against these behaviors, yet you chose to stay silent. This speaks volumes to who you are. I am publicly asking for you to resign. Racism and sexism have no place in the schools. I have heard zero apologies for your comments, and you have plenty of time, you have had plenty of time to do so. You show no remorse and obviously do not care how your comments affect others. Our students deserve better. Please do not stand in the way of ensuring they have the best education possible.
Thank you, Alyssa, for sharing. I think I would just be repeating myself if I were to just continue what she was saying. But those are some great points that I've seen personally on this board. I have nothing but respect for Mr. Wagner. He has shown a lot of support, especially in the gearing in my beginning process of being on the board. And I wanted to always give Paul the benefit of the doubt and try to understand him. Because I do know his heart is definitely trying for the best. But unfortunately, I do believe that there are some areas of disrespect that we've given plenty of opportunity at hand for him to come about, but that has never turned. Unfortunately, I've seen stubbornness, I've seen, I, I, I wanna even say the, I've seen lies come about it, but that would be my own personal opinion on that. So I think as a community leader, I don't believe that he would be a good example. If anything, it would maybe cause more rage and just not a good example in general. I mean, if we're really looking out for our children in the community, it, it wouldn't be able to handle it like this. It would be best to really come about it with less anger, less pointing the finger and just more optimize, just to be optimistic. I mean, at the end of the day, and to have more faith and to really believe what we are trying to push here. And that is to build a community, to build that success, and to really help elevate everybody here. Whether, what color you are, I mean, that is the main exact goal right there. We don't need to be seeing each other hurt or belittle, and unfortunately, I have seen those actions, Paul. Thank you.
Paul, I wanna start by saying this is truly one of the saddest board meetings I've been to, and in over twenty-five years, I've been to a lot. It's sad because we've never had a board member who's caused the division and the heartache and the hurt that, that is happening now. I wanna explain why and why, and I wanna share with you that I nominated somebody else for the WASD position. And after doing so, I spoke to many WASD directors who thanked me because they also were shocked, appalled and disgusted by your words. Part of that also was because your comments were very contrary to what Clover Park School Board represents. And the fact that you are representing us at a WASD level seems very unfit. And I stated the reasons that evening, first of all, voting no on an equity policy. And one of your comments was you do like diversity because you like ethnic food. You do not believe in simple majorities, which majority of the other WASD directors do. Or bonds of special, special elections that will in fact in turn hurt students who cannot, cannot get passings or bonds for updated schools and updated special projects. Not signing our SOPs, some of the WASD people said, but those are the rules you buy and buy, those are your contract. And it's a sad day when we have a board member not sign our SOPs. You know, I can kind of deal with some of those things, but Paul, for me, taking over the top, and because I'm going to pull this up, so I want to read it as opposed to paraphrase anything, this is way too important. On an email that I received, as many of us did, from Paul Wagner, subject regarding race pimps have always existed, but today they are called equity officials. There is not a person that I've spoken to that can believe that was said. And then in the text of your comment, I agree. Look at Jesse Jackson and Al Sharpton, slave masters who do not care about anyone other than themselves. Sent from Paul, sent from my iPhone. Paul, the thing of it is, you know, we're kind of in the same age group, but things that we may have said may have done in the past, to continue to say those without understanding they may be hurtful, and they're definitely wrong, we need to say, I am sorry, that was not my intent. We've asked you to do that, and you have not done so. Anybody else who was either a real politician, an educator, an athlete, or an entertainer would not be allowed to keep their job with somebody who had such bigoted and racist comments. It's a sad day for us, Paul, and I want you to know this is not easy for, certainly isn't easy for me, and I speak to them, it's not easy. But we're Clover Park School District, and we have to do what's best and what's right for all of our children. And when we talk about our equity policy, I want to thank the people, you know, our equity policy has been, people thanks for it, man, male, female, black, white, Hispanic, young, child, adults, teachers, staff. It's been about as universally accepted and appreciated as anything we've ever done. We have never taken a policy that spent six weeks working on, six months working on it, and then have that piece, which is right and good, tear us apart, is really sad. So Paul, you know, we have to do this, and there's not a person in the WASD organization that I've spoken to, the Board of Directors who were on the Zoom that night, I've received many phone calls thanking me for having the guts to stand up and say it. So I'm sorry that it happened. I'm more, yes, I am. Yes, I am. This is very hard. So that being said, we have to move forward with what's right. We have to move forward with what's right for our children.
Thank you.
They're bullying.
So Paul, go ahead.
I'm not acting like you wanted to.
Okay.
That's bullying.
In this document that you read, you classified me as a public employee, so I'm confused by that because I'm not a public employee. I'm an elected official. So that's confusing to me. So unless you're talking about some other public employee, I don't know what that means. Second, in the RCW that you cited in this, in this document, paragraph F of the executive sessions says, to receive and evaluate complaints or charges brought against a public officer or employee, so I don't know which one I am. However, upon the request of such officer or employee, a public hearing or a meeting open to the public shall be conducted upon such complaint or charge. So I'm requesting you to set a date to have an employee so that I can have my counsel and my witnesses stand and save my case.
That would be equitable.
So, so, so probably the thing to do at this point in time is table this until we have a public hearing.
Yeah, because you've only pulled.
We don't take the comments at this time from the public on this issue, so we're discussing it. Paul, is there anything else you wanted to show? Because you've heard concerns about racial remarks that were inappropriate. You've heard concerns about things that you have said that are hurtful to real people right here on your own board, let's trust the district. And all I have heard from you is mechanical questions about processes. So once again, we're giving you an opportunity. I love here, are you sorry for any of the things that you said that were hurtful?
So you guys have to plan your writing of this, but you're not going to give him time to plan his defense.
Right.
So again, the public, if you continue, we will ask you to leave, but Paul, I'm asking because we all have comments, you asked your questions. We're being fair, we are sharing this in public. And so, Paul, it was very simple.
It is very simple, aren't you? So tell me, tell me when you're gonna schedule my public hearing.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We need a public hearing.
Well, go ahead, Paul. If you don't have any other comments, if the board doesn't have any comments, I'm ready to vote. If you're ready to vote, I'm censuring you.
You guys answer. Listen to the.
He said that right.
Leadership, listen to who? Yourself? Yourself?
I'm listening. We have to understand under the.
No, that's for me.
I don't understand.
But I got.
I would agree that at this point, we're not going to be quiet.
I don't know anyone of them.
We'll go ahead and have a meeting. We'll come back in twenty minutes. Believe that people will be at a better place. We cleared the board, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to go ahead and reconvene in our meeting as long as the civility maintains the opportunity for us to have a board meeting with clarity against civility. So I appreciate the fact that we are now managing our emotions. I can appreciate being upset, but we do want to make sure that we follow the procedures that we work to agree upon as a board conducting our meetings. We are now, uh, individual action item number twenty-two dash zero four-four, which is a commitment to equity inclusion is their emotion. Some of them made by girls, some of them by Anthony, and then I'm going to go ahead and speak to this one. There are those things that you wanted to show me as well, but. Whereas the Cooper Park School District Board of Directors through its equity policy is committed to creating and fostering learning environments that support student achievement and empowerment through equity, diversity, and inclusion. And whereas the board is steadfast in its enduring obligation to ensure that the path to eliminating racial disparities and disproportionality in the district, and that the board is responsible for understanding the district's systemic approach to equity and holding the district accountable for closing opportunity gaps, eliminating disparities, and empowering diverse voices. And whereas the board is committed to a growth mindset that equips it to affirm the value of the diversity in our district and to address the need for change when that occurs. And whereas engaging in communications that do not support those goals not only adversely impacts the commitments outlined in our equity and inclusion policy, but also may create a working environment that perpetuates a system where historically marginalized people may continue to be harmed by internal and external systems. Now there, our board being resolved that the Cooper Park School District Board of Directors denounces racism in all forms and is committed to the work of equity and inclusion. The board does not tolerate or endorse degradation of the district's equity and inclusion goals and commitment. And the Cooper Park School District Board of Directors will not tolerate a hostile learning or work environment that supports divisiveness and a lack of tolerance, and instead embraces a common unity around our stated and adopted equity, diversity, and inclusive goals. Part of the reason that we are moving forward with this is because of the questions that have been raised by some of the comments that were dealt with and discussed earlier even tonight. And the reality is what we're wanting to do in this is to not only reaffirm community, I reaffirms not the strength of the word that I would want to share. What I want to share is that you would come to a place where perhaps you would trust the school board of really believing in equity policy that we passed, that we really genuinely are committed to it, and that is as a whole, we know that there's so much work to be done. We know that even in our own professional development that we've had around equity, that this is not a token gesture at all. We know that children's very lives are at stake in being able to either be set up for success. And our goal is to truly create a place of respect and value and trust. And so we are reaffirming this. It's not that we slayed away from it because of what one director has said. We're nervous that what's been said might cause you to trust us less, community, and our commitment is not swaying in that area. That's why we're showing what we're doing tonight. And so that is speaking of this particular action item. Or is there any questions or comments from your perspective? All those in favor, please raise your right.
You were asking for comments.
I understand.
It's something you thought I did. You knew.
I don't, Paul. Please don't say things like that. I asked if there was any comments. Nobody said it.
Sorry, I missper.
Okay.
Okay, in the first paragraph, it says achievement, empowerment through equity, diversity, inclusion. Anybody have an answer for that? How do we do that? I don't think that question's ever been answered, nor does our policy answer that. So that's number one that I have an issue with this. Number, paragraph number four, it says if we don't support or if we make a comment against it in any way, that's a, that's a bad thing, right? But you know, what about our constitution, which we put our hands up to support? How about our free speech rights? Don't we have an opportunity to speak, free speech? And so I think this policy violates our constitution, therefore I will, you know, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, I'll say something. You have a right to say what you are going to say, but words don't, aren't without consequences. Everyone has the right to say what you want, but if you say racially insensitive things and sexist comments, it's not going to go well. And people have a right to respond back and say that they don't agree with it. Like I had said earlier, you have made many of the comments directly to me. I was on the receipt. It was not hearsay. Multiple people have heard it. It was on public meetings. And you are not remorseful. So that's fine. You don't have to be remorseful, but we also don't have to agree with you. So speak what you want, but that doesn't mean that we're not going to say, whoa, we definitely don't agree with that. And I'm not going to stand here and say that I agree with it because it is wrong, very wrong.
So, so you're going to support this document that's in violation of our constitution? So how does that sit?
It's not in violation of our constitution. We have our.
When you take away people's right to speak.
So all you, you asked a question. She started speaking and then.
We have always had, the past ten years, you sign in the standard operating procedures. Have you not? Ten year, year ten? Nine years, you signed a document that said once a board agrees on something, you will support that. You can have your own. I was actually the one that changed that to, you can say your personal opinion, but when you are in a meeting, a group meeting, or you're presenting yourself as a board member, you will say what the board has decided. Prime example, this naming of the middle school. I was in agreeance with you. Our vote did not make it through. I don't go around telling everyone in the community that I didn't get my way. I say, yeah, yeah, this is the new middle school. This is what was decided as a board, and that's the facts. That's what we have signed. That is what you have signed for the past nine years. It is only this year that you have decided you don't want to follow that anymore, and now it's unconstitutional.
I want to remind the board as well, and it's fair to have public comments. That's what we're doing, of comments with each other in front of our public. The reality is that this has to do with a supportive learning and working environment versus a hostile one, or one where there is derogatory statements that have been made. And so it's not about constitutional rights in that area. It's about having a work environment that's not hostile, where we are not degrading people with language. And so that is why we're reaffirming that as well, because we want to have an amazing work environment. We want to have an amazing environment, which is called a supportive learning environment in our schools as well. And so again, we're reaffirming that, but we're also acknowledging that we want to build trust on it. And so that's what's at stake here. And so those were, those are powerful words about making sure we have a healthy learning environment versus a hostile one. Other questions or comments?
You know, Paul, I, nobody is saying you can't say whatever you want to say. What we're saying is, the rest of the board, we don't agree. I personally do not agree with the bigotry, the bigoted racist comments that you have made. The race pimps thing alone, I'm embarrassed to even say it. But that being said, you can say whatever you want, just like a person can go into a theater and yell fire. It's not right. It's against the law, but they do still have their freedom of speech. Oh, I'm really sorry that we're having to go through this. Importantly, I'm really sorry, and I truly regret the division that this has caused in our community about doing something that's right. When it reads.
Are we talking about equity policy?
When it reads. For the district's accounting for closing opportunity gaps, eliminating disparities, empowering diverse voices. Who can disagree with that?
But that's not what you're doing.
I, that's a part of, anyway.
We don't like that word.
Anyway, by the bare fact, I'm, yes, that's all I need to say.
Are there any other comments on the board? All those in favor, twenty-one dash zero forty-four, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Your vote is four to one.
Thank you, Paul.
And you will now move to board member four. Paul, why don't we go ahead and start with you as we usually do.
The only comment I have this meeting will have the, was the regional annual meeting that's coming up, that we're doing in the month. We get Bellevue, and I think we have a lot of good things going on, so hopefully this year will be there.
The, Carol, does you have anything to show the board on our report?
Um. I prepared thought. My thoughts more importantly were, I'm really, gosh, I've never said, I'm sorry so many times in the board meeting, but I feel this community has been, never been as divided, torn apart, and divided over a campaign. I've been in five of my own, I believe, never have, excuse me, never has one been as nasty, negative, totally, I'm going to say disrespectful toward our system.
Then you misunderstand.
One of the things, excuse me, I'm not finished. One of the things that, that really set me down, the name-calling, the name-calling.
Yeah, that's.
When this school district, when people go out, when they're referring to. A diploma now? When my children and many of the people who were in opposition of that graduated from the school district, the graduation rate was in the mid-sixties. An eighty-eight percent graduation rate is not a diploma now. And to say that validates the students' work, it invalidates the family's commitment, and it truly hurts and invalidates the staff who are giving their all and have been doing so during this difficult time. Now, it's up to all of us. We have to find a way to be committed, to put this community back together, and move this community, our district, forward for the sake of our children. And I'm hoping that we can find a common ground to do that for our children. Thank you very much.
People that are crazy, how do you, no, why does, how do you expect to think that?
And so I'm just going to acknowledge that if we have any more people standing up and trying to control the meeting, again, this is the meeting of the board, done in public. We do it in public as long as we can practice civility. If the civility is not honored, this is my last warning, then we will recess and we will go ahead and reconvene tomorrow afternoon at five p.m. virtually, because that's what is outlined, would be the right process. And I mention that because I'd like to finish this board meeting, give the board an opportunity to share their board discussion notes. Nobody interrupt this. You got Rue and Paul Lightman chair, yes. Don't interrupt whenever people are sharing theirs. Be civil. Listen and learn. Thank you, Anthony.
Well, I can appreciate everybody being here, that's for sure, because I can see everybody here's got a lot of heart and wanting to do the right thing. But as we all know too, I mean, interrupting, nobody likes to be interrupted, right? Nobody likes to be disrespected or to feel belittled. And I know that was one of my main things of being on the school board was to implement that. I mean, nobody deserves that. We are all equal. Doesn't matter what color you are, how much you have in your bank account, or who you know. Doesn't matter what color you are, how much you have in your bank account, or who you know. I mean, let's work together, and that is the atmosphere that exactly what we need. And right now, we just got to stop with all of the, the arguing, all of that. It's good to get the opinions out. We need to hear it. We've got to learn from it, and everything that everybody has to say is important, but is the second that we start bashing each other and start wanting to sue each other and, and really create wars within each other. I mean, that is just, that's horrible. That's like saying, that's my basketball, give it back to me. You can't play with it when you know it's the school's basketball. We have to share it. So let, let's come together and work together. And we got to stick that plan and make it happen because it is for our children. It is for the future. And they have to have a stress-free environment. I mean, that, that would be the ultimate experience for them. I mean, right now, there's so many kids, so many families that are struggling, going through so many different challenges. Emotionally, they miss their friends, whatever it may be. There are challenges right now, and we really need to stick up for them and be there and, and really work together and be that true good example. We don't want to see our kids fighting and doing this same thing that's happening tonight. We, we got to step up to the plate, guys. So let, let's see some good change. Those are my board reports, and that is what I've been seeing in the community. And, and I, I really want just people to know that we are not, I'm personally not racist. I'm not sitting up here wanting people to go through challenges even further than what they already are going through. We want to make that road and get those barriers out the way so we can all walk down and be winners together.
Yeah, I think one thing's for sure. Everyone in the room has a common goal of do what's best for the children. How we get there. Things be a little different, but that's okay. I think that at the center of it are still two children are the focus. I am going to go off of Carol's comments, is I do hope that we can continue on and work together, everyone, to move the district forward. I really felt like we were moving forward. The district got a great relationship with the city council. Things were going well. And I just feel like we got shot backwards because of the election. I, you know, I think the saddest part for me is that we can tell our kids to be kind to one another and you raise them to be the best humans that they could possibly be. And then adults are fighting, name calling. I mean, the things that I've heard about me in the past, for five months. I couldn't even believe what I was reading. I'm like, wow, I'm really glad my kids can't read. My niece and nephew can. Poor kids had to hear things, you know, adult conversations that they shouldn't have heard. I really, really hope that everyone can realize that there is a common goal. Let's try to work there together. No one is going to get anywhere by name-calling and screaming at each other and who's going to be the loudest to get their voice across. You know, we are humans as well. We're elected officials, but we have feelings. And you know, when my motherhood is insulted and, you know, my path for, by the way, my kids aren't even in school. So I don't send them to private schools. They're not in school. And I, I'm going to clear this up because it's a great topic of conversation. I did go to a private school. I also went to a public school for most of my life. And I did not get to make the choice in ninth grade of whether or not I attended a public school or a private school. That was my parents' decision, and they had the right as parents to do what was best for their children, just like everyone in here. Everyone here had the right to do what's best for theirs. My path for my children could be completely different. But I did have the opportunity to see the differences between public and private school, and I actually continued on to a public college for further, for further education. So I just really hope that we can all work together and do better.
Do it. It's interesting that it's easy to like people when everybody's agreeing on everything. It's much more difficult to take time to find out why some people don't agree with it. And so it's very difficult to hear the story of another individual. My board report tonight, it doesn't have to do so much, and I hear that the need, the children first, and then inappropriate behavior on a small faction of people. But every voice genuinely counts. And there is an opportunity. You get to hear a story, to hear a hurt, and see how we could possibly come together to make things moving towards a direction of healing. For that to happen, in my life, you have to have a, a conversation where you actually care and are able to be challenged. And I think we sought to do that over, the equity policy was not six months, is what was said earlier, and I can appreciate that. The equity policy's been going since twenty nineteen. It's a long time. We've had very deep, thorough conversations. And so that's still telling us that we're on a journey. We've been embarking on a journey to get to really know people, real people. And I hope you can see Lakewood. Lakewood isn't one segment of people, and the beauty of Lakewood is there's many different types of people here. And in that, what a beautiful thing if we can actually leverage each stories and experiences and skill sets to do something very significant with each other, as opposed to liking who agrees with us and then disliking who doesn't. I want to come back though, to say what I said earlier, that I feel everything for me and hearing another person's story is contingent upon trust. Whether or not they're telling the truth, whether or not when you share things, they will mislead or give misinformation or use it to their advantage, use it to put you down or put you in your place. To continue to take advantage of a disadvantage is not a very cohesive community that I'm looking for. So I want to acknowledge that from my perspective, in the city of Lakewood, I want to hear each person's story. I care about each other. And I hope that you will trust us even tonight. I feel like if I was the person who's been historically putting in his or her place or their place, I would not feel ready about this meeting. I'd really see that's how it goes. And so I don't want to apologize for other people. That's not my responsibility. My responsibility is to try to impart that we would have an environment where we care about each other, where we build trust. And I've done that so well with yours aboard over the years, and even with Director Wagner, we disagreed on several things. Paul's been in my home so many times. I have so many phone calls on Saturdays and Sundays of years. I bet there's been a hundred of them where we've connected and talked and worked. And that's the way that we commit ourselves to try and hear, understand, and appreciate one another, to create something better than us, as opposed to trying to convince people of what we want. And so I've done that, but the rest of you, you know, hand, acknowledge I haven't done that long. You've been so open. It's been so great. I trust you full-heartedly, and I appreciate what you said tonight. At least I haven't known you as, as long either, but I, I've heard what you said, the things that you stated. It was interesting to me tonight that they were so active, that you took time to make sure it was completely active. And so I want you to know that that gives us trust and that builds that and helps. Carol, you're one of those who not only wrote, you wear your heart on the sleeve. I want you to know that I trust your heart and I trust you down at the same time. That's what we pull together, and that's what this community deserves. And so maybe move forward in that direction. So thank you. I also want to acknowledge now that you have written reports that I'd like for you to read. I want to remind you that sometimes we don't read all the things that we're supposed to read, and then there's confusion. So make sure you read them. I'm also listening for a motion to adjourn. Made by Carol, seconded by Anthony. So the hands go up. All those in favor of a journey at eight forty, is that? Please raise your right hand. The applause is the same. And how great that the motion, jury unanimously.